I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. There's nothing, uh, for one, I do apologize for the lateness of the agenda. Obviously, there was a small storm and most of the village staff were involved in that, supervising myself and the village clerk. So, uh, we should wait for the clerk because we have to have her legally here to start. Hey Katie!
I'm right here!
Here she is.
I'm sorry, this is me.
No, it's not you. I started and forgot, I didn't realize you were here.
What do you want to do about this? Thank you.
Now, I think Susan and I got everything, but is there anything else to add to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Don Pur's public access recommendation.
Well, that was, that actually was purposely not put on to be put on for our next set of meetings.
Okay.
I did.
And what about...
I thought she needed to be here.
Sorry?
We can just ask him at three times or then that he will give us the...
Well, he wasn't answering, so...
Actually, what?
We need to dance their time. Are we talking about for next year on the A-Fund access?
I believe that Supervisor Zimmet did not contact me because she offered to bring them to put it on.
If it requires us to sit and read and get back from something, we probably don't have time to deal with it tonight. So is there anything else ready to go? Because we've only got an hour and a half before the town is meeting. Alright, good. So I guess I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Does anyone know where, um, well, Susan and, uh, well, is Arianna still?
Arianna's still with...
Okay, um, and Su- anyone heard from Susan?
I hear her.
Okay. We'll see more on that.
I think you, don't they have to make their own individual motions and... Motions and seconds and all that, just?
Well...
Just for the second.
They all voted in favor of your agenda.
Everybody voted aye.
All ayes.
Town and village.
So this was a student.
Who would like to take it, who would like to make the motion?
There you go.
I make a motion that the town board accept the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Katie.
Alright. The, uh, that's it then, public comment?
Oh, yes.
Leave?
So, uh, these comments are for the town board, but they'll be quick. So, um, I'd like to comment on a budgetary matter, and that's the matter of the eleven thousand dollar about raise for the STICEN portion of the raise for Susan Zimmet. And first I'd say I'm livid about this, as many other people are. First that she would have, or that a elected official would have the ball to ask for a raise relatively early in the term, and such a large raise at that, and second that the town board would approve this raise. Uh, Susan, as any supervisor, was hired knowing what the job would be, and doing a good job is what it entails. So, uh, a raise should not, for doing the job, one shouldn't get a raise. Uh, everyone else is hired to do a good job, as the supervisor is. And, uh, the, uh, I guess it makes me even more livid than other people because, uh, the present economic climate, it really seems out of line to ask for such a raise. If the supervisor believes that good performance warrants such a raise, I think likewise, poor performance perhaps should be penalized. So what I found in this line of reasoning, I suggest setting certain high goals that must be met, then working out penalties if it's not met. Uh, the board is obviously, I think, out of touch with the townspeople they represent. You just have, you just have to read the letters in the paper, and you can see the shock and outrage at the, uh, at the very idea of such a raise, of any raise at this point. Now, looking forward, I'd like to know specifically, and have it reported more widespread, which, uh, town board members specifically voted for this raise, the STICEN raise, not the other raise. And I'd also like to know if there's any way this raise can be stopped. And, uh, also, how long, is this raised for the whole term?
It's, it's for this year and for next year. So it's retroactive for this year, and, uh, it will extend into 2013.
So I guess my, one of my main points is if there's any way that this could be reversed, or like, and how that can be done, petition?
I guess, I mean, I guess it could be, no, no, popular, but, uh, we need to move on because we're here for it, but it would have to, we can discuss this, if you want to wait for the town meeting, but, uh, it would, uh, it could be rolled up again as a budget line, to reduce that budget line. It could be proposed to reduce the budget, the supervisor's budget line, which is on the east side of the budget, which we could discuss, you know, prior to the budget being adopted.
And would that be today when it's discussed?
We could.
And the, so the, at eight o'clock will be the, the town board part of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try and return at that point.
Okay.
Thankfully.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for having, letting me speak.
You're welcome, Lee. Bye, Dan.
Mark, you're, I already got anything for public comment? Alright. Um, I think let's give the announcements for, well, actually, no, I have one.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Um, Mohawk Consultations is hosting an alternative energy conference Monday, November 12th, at Mohawk Mountain House, from nine to four P.M., nine A.M. to four P.M. Um, there will be speakers on geothermal, solar, wind, biofuel, Nicerda will be there, and, um, you can learn more about how to register at mohawk-consultations.inc.
Thanks. Any others? Alright, I have one, an obvious one. Um, you know, we dodged a really big bullet again with Hurricane Sandy. A lot of people don't know how big a bullet we dodged at Irene, but the, um, I mean, the pictures down from New York City, I think tell a lot for us here. There's gonna be some letters, I'm sure, and some articles in the paper, and of course, we have to thank, as always, you know, Chief Snyder and the town police, Chief DeGatkin and the SUNY police, President Bassinet and the rescue squad, Chief McGuire and the fire department, Superintendent Turwilger and the village DPW, and Supervisor Marks and the town highway. And, um, there's a couple other people that I think, well... Put it to you this way, we have a lot of people in the community, all the people I just named, and the people who work for them, who have chosen to spend their careers in emergency services. And we train them well, and they're incredibly, um, gifted people who put their own lives aside to make ours better and make sure we're safe in an emergency. But there's a couple other people who stepped forward and called, um, who didn't have training, who'd never been part of an emergency operations center. And I think that they deserve, um, to be known. One, two of them here at the table, um, Deputy Mayor Rhodes and Councilman Jeff Logan, who were called to set up an op-alternate site here at Village Hall. Uh, for any of you who in Irene made a phone call last year, um, and got routed to Village Hall to find out where the shelter was, or where you can find blankets, or what roads were closed, we put Sally and Jeff in charge of that site, and they already had things lined up and organized, ready to go. Thankfully, we didn't have to pull that trigger, but thank you both for stepping up for that. Um, and also, I'd like to publicly thank, um, KT Tobin and Craig Shankles, who were the first of, I think, half a dozen people who called me back, uh, when I reached out to find public information officers, people who could just focus on getting the information out to the public while the rest was dealt with the, the crisis. And they both really rose to the occasion, they were in every EOC meeting, as were Jeff and Sally, and really stepped up. Um, and if any of you saw that blog, the Emergency Operations Center blog, you have KT and Craig to thank for that, and all the information that went out. Finally, I think that, as Mayor Bloomberg has said, I don't think there's any doubt that climate change accelerated or amplified the storm that we had, which means that, um, this isn't going away. And we'll be doing an EOC again and again and again. And, um, because of that, I guess I'd like to, mostly for anyone who's watching at home, if any of you watching, when you were five years old, ever wanted to be a firefighter or a paramedic, it's time. Um, we need your help, we need you in the fire department, we need you in the rescue squad, we need you volunteering. Um, and next time we're in one of these emergencies and your lights are out, think about the people who are racing around in the dark, trying to make, get those lights turned on, and make sure people are safe, and, uh, and you could be one of them, and we need your help. So please call and please volunteer, because the storms are gonna get worse, our responses are gonna get better, but there's always gonna be things we miss, and we could use more hands. So I guess with that, we had a fantastic drill, because it was exactly, uh, risk enough that it had to be taken deadly seriously, but it was a beautiful night, and we got a perfect, perfect practice round for our EOC. Um, and the last person to thank, again, who probably doesn't get enough thanks, is the, the, one of the roles we have is to, to run the EOC operations center itself, and both in Irene and Sandy, that role is filled by Gail Gallery. So if you see her on the street, uh, please shake her hand, give her, give her some thanks, because she did, she did a phenomenal job just to, to assist everyone else, so. Thank you very much, and unless there's another announcement?
Can you make one more thanks for the parade too, because that was just beyond belief?
To get the, what, that the parade happened?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you to the Lions Club, to David Santner at the bakery, who's doing this tonight.
Same volunteers that didn't see.
Yeah, and we, really, people just dropped what they could and really made sure the week went on as smoothly as possible.
Thank you.
Stuart, you have something else?
Just a, a point of information, our, um, we have with our packs the draft minutes from the last two meetings. Is that on the agenda for us to adopt those, or do we ever adopt these ever?
We do, let's take that as given, um, add that to the agenda. Minutes, a couple of minutes. Alright, um, I guess let's do, if, kind of with your permission, I think, I'm guessing that under new business, the water meters and the fire contractor are probably the no brainers, and we can knock those out of the way first. I know I can explain briefly, the water meters are a project that the village done back in oh-three to oh-seven, to buy water meters for the town, um, because we replaced ours then. So that money has been sitting there unused all these years, so we'd like, basically, we're offering to buy water meters for the town, um, town system, for accurate, more accurate readings for you and buildings for us, et cetera, et cetera.
The tip, you know, is we put in our budget last year, this was quite a discussion. So, we, and actually, we put in money for the budget, for the exact meters that you have already purchased, so we would be paying the village to do the reading, because for the vehicle to drive around, it would be going to be able to read it.
It would be, I believe it would include a laptop, which we already have, or it would be something, just one of your highway guys would have to get the software is on?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure. I know we have it in the budget, it was a contentious issue, and we, and it passed that we were going to buy the meters.
Right, but for this year, we would just need to figure out what it's gonna cost, so we can put it in each line.
Or do you want it, do you, because the village, things already approved this ahead of time, so we can just kick this to your meeting at eight, and you guys can figure out whether you want these or not?
But we just need to know, and we do have an estimate of what it costs to read the meters.
Well, basically, it's what it's gonna save for the town.
But we have to put a number in our, in our...
And actually, that makes us have information.
And our plan was to pay the, I, plan was last year, was to pay the village to then go and read our meters for us. That was going to be part of the, the deal, was because you guys have the software already that drives around, I believe?
Mm-hmm. The new ones have a radio signal, just broadcast the number.
And that's what we were, we put in our budget purchase, and that was, uh, now, the one that was purchasing it is since retired, but I don't, I don't know if the purchase was ever made or not, though.
No.
So, so what's interesting is actually, we do have money in our budget under a line to purchase from this year's budgets from 2012. We do have money that we have collected from our...
Well, check, well, I guess check, because there could be other, because you have so many water districts, it could be that there were some, or, I don't know, that could be district, I don't know.
Good, no.
What I think we...
The answer is, yeah, yeah, we're definitely interested.
I would like to move from, or, no, we did all.
We did all.
We did our side. Basically, yeah, what you need to do is just to move to approve the town developing with the village, an electronic water meter system for the town. It's gonna save you a half line of a person and a lot of bookkeeping costs. And then, just authorize the, whoever's on your side, Nancy and whoever, to work out the process of how we're gonna do it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So is that, or is it table that to the town board?
Yeah.
I'm not table, but, uh, defer it to the town board?
Yeah, to move it, yeah.
Well, then, they can do it at their meeting later, if they want, if they, if they have more to have, that's all. Shouldn't take very long.
I'd do it now, it's a joint meeting, and it's on the joint meeting agenda.
So would you like us to make a motion that, uh, the town accept, I'd like to make a motion that the town accept the water meters from the village of New Paltz?
And that the supervisor and the village treasurer will work out the process and the plan.
Second.
That's how we say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, beautiful. Thank you very much.
Uh, the second one that's quick, I think, the fire budget protection contract, I don't know how, in the loop you've been...
I have...
There've been some, well, there've been some back and forth on, on new ideas between the village and the company. What we came to is what the village and the company would like to propose is we just change the numbers to be relevant to the year we're in, but in other, in other cases, keep all the same language, identical to the last few we've had, and then have a meeting in February, um, with all the, the primary players around the table, and do it in one session, you know, if we can, but go over all the ideas for improvements, and with the thought of having that done by the village budget season, and then the start of the fiscal year in June. So, rather than drag this contract out, we sign this on the old terms, start, start over with the new contract when, uh, since this was already expired, and it'll give us more breathing room and time to, to get it done.
We all got an email from Susan today saying that she had a new contract with the new numbers in it that she had printed.
It's basically the same numbers in the old contract.
It's a rollover. What we're doing is suggesting that we roll...
Same as last year, same thing.
The role, our last year's contract to this year, and starting in February 2013, that the town and the village and the fire company and the fire department all sit down together at one time and work out any of the differences. And we need to move it to... And I will move it...
We didn't have the belief.
No, we didn't. I will move it on the village side.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, is that amenable to the three of you?
I, I, I don't, I can't vote on it, because I don't know, are we talking about the numbers in Joe Moriello's memo to us?
We know what we're talking about. It's all it is, is, all it is, is the, is the current fiscal year, the current fire department's budget, divided out on the same old formula, and change the date. That's the only thing that changed in the contract. You shift gears, right here.
Do you have this?
I have a question about the payment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jason, here. Four A. Says the town should pay the village in two installments. Fifty percent of what?
Uh, the total consideration due from the town.
It's so lengthy here, though.
Which is the, which is the town's portion of the...
Which is calculated at some future date?
It's in the, it's actually in the contracts, right, under, uh, budget of proponent, sorry. It's under, um... No, here it is.
I think it's two hundred and forty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-one, sixty cents, uh, in two installments.
But...
But that's, that was, if this had been signed in time. This, this expired May thirty-first of this year.
And for the town side, it will expire December thirtieth, two thousand twelve, because your budget is over. So it'll have to be paid in one installment.
Well, this says that the term is June twenty-twelve to May thirty-first, twenty thirteen. Right?
That's the current contract. So we're just gonna roll it, Katie, one more year, and then we will...
The balance will be due immediately.
Pound down, pound down.
Which is what you would have voted anyway if this was signed in June, so.
We haven't made any payments this year?
No.
No.
Because we, you had a contract, that's not your fault.
That's, this is why we wanna get this signed, get the books cleared off, and rather than get this tangled in other issues, we can just...
Some years it's been much later than this.
Yeah.
No, it hasn't. I just remember getting this on our agenda and making a motion to pay, to get this check paid, but for that could have been last year. Alright, so, um...
So it's not, it's the same contract we approved a year ago, so...
I make a motion that the town, uh, enter into a fire protection contract with the village in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents to expire in May, on May thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
I, I'll second it for discussion purposes. What I would like to do is, I would really like to handle our part of it during the second part of this session, for the town board, so we have more information.
Okay, I will draw the motion, and we'll, I'll do it later.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Because I can't open PDFs, she said.
It's in a...
Doesn't open.
Kevin, it's not a...
I have thirteen, but here...
I, I, I see that. I just wanna make sure we understand that we're paying two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars tomorrow.
Your, your budget.
Yeah.
Well, I know we have two hundred and forty-three in the budget, but, okay.
So we have Moriella Pool and the rescue squad, both from the town.
Where is our supervisor?
I'll agree to that, what we're talking about, as long as it settles tonight, and the check is in the mail.
I got a toll to be here at six-thirty, it's seven, so I don't, I don't...
Kevin. I'm happy to agree with that, as long as you all take care of this tonight, and the check is in the mail.
I, I don't have a problem taking care of it, I just need more input from the, from Susan.
But I mean, yeah, because we're, you're ending the fiscal year.
No problem.
Alright, well, we have expenditures and balances in our packet, so assuming the money is there, I don't think there will be a problem. Thank, and a lot of people to look through to find us.
Well, so we'll hopefully hear this evening, so... Moriella Pool and the rescue squad are from the town, just one of the three of you able to fill us in on the, the ten-second, the elevator speech version of these?
The elevator speech version is, we anticipate a sixty thousand dollar net operating loss this year, this coming year.
For which?
For two thousand thirteen.
For the pool?
For the pool. And we're asking the village to split the operating loss with us.
How is that different than paying it from the A-Fund? I mean, isn't it just apple, I mean, six of one happened, the other?
We would put the, uh, the expenses for it would go onto the B-side then, and we would just split the, the loss on it, whatever it may be.
No, no, but, okay.
A difference on the A-Fund?
Let me rephrase my questions. Um, if the, if the end result is village and town taxpayers equally, um, equally sharing the burden of the losses for the pool, that's status quo. Because if it's operating a loss, paid out of the A-Fund, the village residents pay those taxes. So, so I'm paying, I'm already paying my share of the losses. What, what benefit is it to the two governments to have those, the, the, the expenses and losses split into two different budgets rather than kept in one? Because effectively, for the public, it makes no difference at all.
It makes a huge difference, because the loss on the village side is only twenty-five cents on the dollar. So you're gaining on your loss. The village tax assessment is less than the town's, so you're only paying, on the A-side, you're only paying about a quarter of every dollar. So if we split it fifty-fifty, then you're paying fifty cents on the dollar, and we're paying fifty cents on the dollar.
That's not how the way A-Fund works for individual programs.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it does.
Sure.
Sure it does, absolutely.
Well, what am I confused about then? And I'll figure that out later.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, yeah, because I apologize, I assume, we assume the information was sent over, so I don't wanna try. The, the point being is that the, you know, and you guys can let us know how you feel, is that, you know, the pool runs, the village and the town jointly run the pool. Uh, we take care of, so to speak, the operations and capital expenses. We've had a great year, I mean, you know, we sat down with Stu and Arianna, and we, you know, we amended the pool, it's incredible, I mean, you know, it's, it looks beautiful.
I understand.
So we're definitely moving ahead a lot, so what we're just trying to do, though, now, is to kinda keep moving forward, is that we actually do share all the expenses equally, instead of just us taking part in it.
But, but, hold on, hold on, because the other thing is, is, and, you know, I don't say this in a, whatever, but, it seems... I have to admit, my first reaction is a little bit skeptical, because what it sounds like to me is the pool's been badly managed and running at a loss, and now the town's coming to the village for a bailout, basically. And you want us to pay, you want us to pay more of a share of the loss than we didn't have?
No, I understand.
Wait, 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 let me finish what I have to say first. It sounds to me, and please tell me what, what I'm, like I said, what I'm missing, because it sounds and looks on the surface like we're being asked to pay a larger proportion of the loss that we had no role in creating. And I'm not su, I'm not saying this necessarily even a bad thing, but as a producer responsibility question, I feel I have to ask it, because why is it at a loss? And would you be coming to, and would you be coming to split the cost if it was running at a profit?
And it all comes...
And is it not a responsibility?
Well, it all comes down to how you view, and I said the same thing to Sol, how do you view government? Is, is government here to provide for what people can't provide for themselves? The answer is yes. Recreation programs, they run at a loss. Why? Because we need to provide recreation. So if we take the summer rec program, we're providing daycare for children, for working parents. The pool, it runs at a loss, because we're providing a service they can't, other people can't use. If you feel that this needs to be a profit-making venture or a break-even venture, I will just, philosophically, I'm gonna disagree with you. I think there's certain things we need to do that, for our community, that do run at a loss.
Absolutely.
For me, recreation, so that, there's your answer, recreation would be one in the pool. So it's not poor management. I, I take offense to that remark when you say it's being mismanaged. Not being mismanaged at all. Our operating expenses were actually less this year than they were in the previous year. Bill has done everything possible to keep that pool running as tight as a budget as possible. And it's going to run at a loss. Now philosophically, if you think that's wrong, I'm sorry, and then we can meet about that, but...
It's not wrong.
If you're gonna raise the rates, what's gonna happen? If you're gonna raise the rates, you're going to start, we're, we're already getting to a point where you're pricing people out. People have to make that choice. Believe it or not, there's people that write checks, and it's difficult for them, they have to, they actually pay when they first start coming in, the daily fee, because they even say to them at the gate, "I'm sorry, I don't have the money right now." They don't have the three hundred and twenty-five dollars to buy a family membership up front. They have to wait sometimes. They go, "Well, I'm not paid until two weeks," and that's where we're at. And it's, that is increasing every year. Our membership is going up every year, because more and more people are not vacationing out of their community. It's becoming a huge, huge draw. And now we made more money this year. We actually opened up a little bit earlier this year. We opened during that heat wave. So, I, again, I can go either way, I mean, no, so when we come into you as a profit, well, it's never running a profit. None of our recreation programs are ever running a profit. So when I come to you and say, "Hey, it's running at a profit, we're gonna spill over," I, I don't know, Jason. Odds are, no, obviously not, because we'd say, "Hey, it's working fine, it's running at a profit." The profit would instantly be eaten by any upgrades we haven't done at the pool. This year, we, we're down to one slide, we need to make a hard decision, do we wanna spend? And it's not six, nine thousand dollars for a slide, we wanna get a slide, we're gonna spend fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars. That's a choice that both these boards need to make, and, and I want us to make that. You know, is this something that we wanna invest in the community? I think we're fortunate to have two pools in our community, on the county pools here, and we have our community pool, and a lot of communities don't have it. Rosendale might not have one again next year. You know, and that's, so, I mean, it's just my, that's just my take.
Brian, sorry, you were waiting to speak.
Brian first.
Two things. So, one, um, I'd like with everyone's permission to, um, limit the discussions to two minutes each, and then, uh, a thirty-second rebuttal, if we all allow it. Would anyone?
I'd actually, at this point, probably not, not, because I think it'd be more, it'd be more, it'd take even more time than it saves.
Okay, but at seven-thirty, we have to start to consolidate the discussion.
We've got half an hour to finish two topics.
Okay. Alright, so that would be the first thing, so if you don't wanna do that, that's fine. Um, so I guess the second thing would say, um, have, have you ever used the pool, Jason?
Sure.
Have you ever used the pool?
Sure.
Really?
I've never been someone hit the pool.
Um, it's, you know...
Not often, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, with our kids, that's a big...
Well, that's, that's true as well. I mean, um, for me personally, I think there are a lot of programs that are important to, um, have for a community and a lot of shared services, and I, and I personally think the role of government is more to protect the public, um, from things they can't protect themselves from, as opposed to maybe offering programs, and, um, at the end of the day, you know, the, the pool, you, you could say it hasn't been mismanaged, but I don't think it's ever run even, or not at a large deficit. I mean, the fact is, this year, you say you've had, um, less of a deficit, which, you know, that's a good thing, we're getting on track, but at the end of the day, like, you know, if, if I were in the pool, which obviously I'm not, I would try to make it break even, because I think it's, it's important, that, I don't think there's really a, a reason to run at a deficit. Maybe I don't understand the logistics of it, but also, I think that something that you guys should consider is that if, if you're in charge of operations, and you wanna split it fifty-fifty, then maybe we should be sharing the operational decisions as well. I think that's been a concern for, uh, a lot of members of the village board. I don't, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I think we've discussed it at points, or at least individually we have. So that would be my contribution to it.
Certainly.
My contribution is that we do pay for the pool through the A-Fund. Village taxpayers are paid an equal amount to town taxpayers in terms of the A-Fund. And to ask the village to split it fifty-fifty, when the village tax base is about twenty-seven percent of the town A-Fund, I don't call that a good deal. Okay, so if you're proposing that we help you by absorbing twenty-seven percent of your loss, I might be willing to discuss that, but I'm not willing to discuss a fifty-fifty break in an operation that the village has already paid its share for, and is being asked to pay again. Then I think it should be proportioned over the tax base total of the A-Fund. Do you understand what I'm saying?
You've been working on the finance committee, haven't you?
I've understood that for a year.
Even working on the finance committee, haven't you?
And, 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 well, and the two thousand eleven, whether people wanted to agree or not, two thousand eleven, the county pool, I mean, the town Moriella Pool was operating at about forty-nine thousand dollar revenue and the expense of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the expenditure side, so...
If you're talking about providing members of the community with something that's positive, with all the money we spend on, all the other stuff we spend money on, sixty thousand dollars to provide a pool for our residents for the summer?
Sixty thousand is not what I figured.
It's cheap. It's cheap.
That's the deficit. That's not what we think.
That's your deficit.
That's your deficit, not your cost.
No, the net cost to us is only sixty. We take in a hundred and thirty-one and we have to pay out a hundred and ninety. So the net cost is only sixty. You have family memberships, a hundred eighty-four from the town, ninety-two from the village. The, the memberships amount to about forty percent of the total revenue. Daily admissions are fifty-one, nine, ninety-three. Swim instruction, not, eleven, eleven thousand, two, twenty-nine. So sixty thousand dollars with all the money we spend on stuff to give people a place to go in the summertime that don't have a place to go, kids that are cooped up in these apartment buildings, and, you know, some don't even have air conditioning. I think sixty thousand dollars is a joke when it comes to providing our community with an opportunity. It's the cheapest recreational opportunity we have in our town.
Okay, because I'm not going to disagree with you, but my point is
The service looking?
As you took the responsibility of wanting to run the Moriella Pool, okay? In the A fund, for the A fund.
It's jointly owned.
That is not the contract that is currently maintained between the town.
There is no contract, Sally.
There is a contract.
Not, not in place.
It certainly is. We've moved it to end this year. So don't, we found that, but my point, Kevin, is this.
It's either we're going to have a pool or we're not going to have a pool. That's going to be your decision.
No, Kevin, it is your decision. And what I'm saying is, if I may finish my time, time, is that.
But I thought we were going to have conversation back to work until everybody.
I lost that.
Excuse me, Sally. I'm the one running this meeting. Please don't interrupt people.
This side of the table gets to talk.
Sally was in the middle of something, responding to questions from Kevin. Your turn is next. Just please wait. That's all.
Okay, and then I just get to continue.
My only point is that if you want the village to share in this on a fifty-fifty sort of basis or proportioned out through the tax base and the A fund, then I think we get joint operation with you. And it cannot be the town operating it and then coming and say, "It's a wonderful recreation program and you please pick up our deficit." That's all I'm saying.
Okay, please.
Okay, so did the joint committee talk about this model at all?
No.
Who?
Not, not, we didn't, we didn't flesh out this, this model. We, we took care of emergency things.
Two, two or three issues, they were paramount. We dealt with those. We dealt, so now we're on step two, which we can really talk about.
So the joint committee hasn't had a chance to weigh in on this. Well, I am very fine with, um, alternating, uh, management of the pool each year. If the village would like to, to be responsible for operations next year, we share the expense, we share the revenue, and let's alternate management. I, I think that's a great idea, Sally, and I would support that.
Well, I was, I was talking about shared management every year.
Well, I think that, you know, we have too many cooks in the kitchen that way. But whatever model you would propose, I, I think that would, I mean, I would be very happy to let the village manage this next year if we can come to an agreement about the financial role here.
Excuse me.
First, I just apologize for being late because I thought the meeting was six-thirty, but when we checked the village website, it said, it said seven o'clock. So I thought it got pushed back.
We went back and forth a bunch on the topic.
Okay, so we looked at the website, I said, I guess it's seven, and I should have called to check because I knew it said six-thirty. So I was just getting everything ready for today's meeting. I have the ambulance stuff. So that's what we have. Um, just a couple of things with more pool, um, in terms of the thought process. Just first, A, if you look back through the minutes of the two boards, what the minutes say, and I'm not, it's not disparaging in any way, I'm just saying what the minutes say. Um, when you go back and look, it says the village chose to pull out of recreation and will no longer support townwide recreation, okay? So how that decision was made, I don't know. I'm just saying what the, I'm just saying what the, it basically says the village chose not to be a part, okay? So we can't go back and create past history. Um, when, um, we were sort of working this, at a certain point, I, and I had talked to everybody individually on the village board about the thought process behind, um, um, the, um, Moriella Pool, where at one point the town wanted, the town board had directed me to just split the costs and split the revenues and just put, you know, half in and let you pick up the other half. If you chose not to, then, you know, maybe the pool wouldn't open next year or whatever. When Gina and I were working on the budget together, we sort of felt like in a way, um, you know, it would be better if we sort of tried to work as a way to work a solution out together. And so what we did was we put in the total expenses, but we took the sixty thousand dollar loss and sort of said that maybe because we both own the pool, you know, that we should basically, um, um, split the loss. That sort of felt a little fair. And then when I was talking to individual board members from the village board, Jason had a lead when I had come in to find him to talk to him about it, but I had gotten, um, um, Stuart and Ariana. And Stuart and Ariana had brought up the concern about, well, if we're going to share the loss, we want to have a say on the operations. And so one of the ideas we came out with, that I'd like to throw on the table as a discussion point, was that we did create a subcommittee of Stuart and Ariana and Jeff and Kevin, and they have been getting together and they have been working on the problems. And we haven't had the kind of issues that we've had in the past. Now, again, sometimes it's the people and we can't always guarantee that the people are going to be in the future. But we talked about possibly in our organizational meetings for both the village and the town, creating a subcommittee of two people from the village, two people from the town that are responsible for the operations of the pool. So it's a town and a village working together through a subcommittee for the operations. They come to the agreement and then they bring it back to the two boards with hopefully both boards supporting the work of their two people they picked. And in this way, you know, we're sort of, you know, in a way, the town is sort of still operating in a way, you know, in terms of our personnel, you know, that, you know, we're using and whatever. But you have the town and village taking a joint ownership, joint operations, and joint decision-making and splitting the loss. So right now, the way the budget is developed, at least for the town budget, is we have all the expenses in here, but we have thirty thousand dollars, um, that we're, you know, of the loss that we're eating. And we haven't shown, like, either, I can't remember if it's thirty thousand dollars of potential revenue coming in from the village or you, I think it's thirty thousand dollars of potential revenue coming in from the village to offset the loss. So that's right now how it's being developed, and that was the thought process of talking to individual board members from the village board. After, you know, I went back to the town board and explained what Gina and I thought was the right way to go, and then came and had individual meetings with you guys, so you sort of knew what the conversation was.
Susan, are we talking about the loss this past year or a, a projected loss for the future?
Two thousand thirteen. Two thousand thirteen.
I think that's about, I think that is about the cost, the loss. Um, I think that some of you might be better than, I mean, Jeff.
And I do want to hear what Kitty has to say, but just so we all have relative numbers. So one is, and again, I, the role of, the role of government is to provide services and for people can't provide for themselves, whether you see this protection or recreation. That's why we have government in the United States. If you look at the county, the county runs at a loss of about eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars every year. So if you think just us, if it's poor management, please call the county, tell them they're managing their pool wrong too. Because they're not. The county is providing a service and they understand it. If you want to take it and break even and make back to sixty thousand dollars, you are going to make our debt, you're going to make us raise the rates. I'm going to say us, it's everyone sitting at this table, plus both boards. You'd have to go up about a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and seventy-five dollars on a family membership. And our daily rate would have to go up probably about four or five dollars. That would put it out of reach. There is not, the people that are using that pool, and I know many of them, I work very deeply down at that pool with that staff. Do I use it a lot? I honestly don't. But go ahead and ask them. I'm down, I'm down there a lot. I go down there and I help them many activities down there. And you're talking about raising rates for four hundred dollars for someone that can't even afford daycare? For people that have trouble putting food under the table? To me, that is, it's incomprehensible that you would even have a debate in your mind that one of the greatest recreational opportunities in this community, the swimming pool, where families all go down there and you'll see the same families every day down there, that we can't afford as a community to provide that to our community. Number one killer of children in the United States is, guess what? Drowning. We teach so many kids here to swim. We're truly doing something to save lives. And to think that you can't take this and share a loss for this, I find, I, I find both sad and disappointing.
All right, now, let's stop there, please. Let's just, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Stop there, please. The hyperbole and the, the exaggeration is not helping the conversation.
What exaggeration was in there? I gave you the dollars and I didn't give you the facts. Everyone else was a fact. It wasn't a single hyperbole, is it? Number one killer of children in the United States is drowning. That's a fact. How much of losing it to county is a fact?
Jeff.
Don't tell me what I can or cannot say, Jason. So if you're going to make a speech about that, the answer is no. So it's no hyperbole in there, okay? That's not hyperbole. Those are all facts.
Jeff, can, Jeff. Excuse me, Susan. I'm sorry. I was in the middle of saying something. The hyperbole isn't helping things.
Tell me where the hyperbole is. Tell me what is not a fact.
If you want to hear that for real, just let me finish the sentence. I'll, I'll get there. Fast, I promise. Framing the conversation as this is, um, this is the, the, that if, that lack of support for your particular idea of what to do next with the Moriella Pool is somewhat tantamount to implicitly risking children's lives is, is somehow driving the poor into a poorer state of life, life in our community. It's just, even for the cases where that's true, it's not going to help us move forward. Because there's nobody around this table, at least on this side of the table, who is saying, "We have objections to your idea because we hate children and families." It's not about that. Everyone here wants, it's, the pool's a good thing. There's some arguments that why would we have one? But that's not where we're at right now. The conversation we're having is how can we make this pool function best for the community? Now, your idea, the town board's idea seems to be that we can just split this fifty-fifty. There's some obvious benefits. On its face, clearly something worth talking about. But when, when, at least from my point, when I feel where there's some serious objections to that, and I had mine, Sally brought up the one I hadn't even thought about, the, whatever the number of the twenty-seven percent.
Twenty percent.
These are not, when we say these things, we're not coming back to you saying, "Screw you, I don't want a pool." We're coming back to you with an alternate idea or a, or a flaw that was found in yours, that maybe if we explore that, we can come to a better one together. So moving from, from the particulars of how we can make this pool good to kind of making it into a political, not a political campaign, but like about telling the story, who can tell a better storyline? We're just going to go in circles, especially because we've got, uh, it's seven seventeen, we've got thirteen minutes to finish, uh, this and the rescue squad, and then a half hour for consolidation. So I, and the last thing I wanted to say was this, is that, um, I guess I wanted to, because obviously you all have spoken a lot about this. I wanted to simply hear from the trustees, if, if there's anybody who feels that there's enough information, uh, that we have in hand to make an informed decision tonight, or is this going to be a longer conversation? Because I think it's going to be a longer one. And maybe there's a good point to pause it if we can find a good resolution for us to, what we need to move forward, if that makes sense. So other than that, that's all I got to say.
I would like to see a proposal in writing before the next joint village board meeting of what you're proposing. And I asked a question and I would appreciate the answer. The, the deficit that you're talking about, that you are asking us to help you with is for the current two thousand twelve year, or is this your projected deficit for two thousand thirteen?
It's two thousand thirteen. And just to add another point. You are a family of four and you live in an apartment complex in the village. Okay? Using your twenty-seven percent. Let's say that out of a hundred, the cost, all right? So you live in the village apartment complex, you pay twenty-seven dollars. You aren't fortunate enough to live in the town apartment complex a hundred yards away, and you're paying seventy-three dollars. Does that make sense?
Neither. If you're renting, your landlord is paying the property tax.
But does that make sense?
What doesn't make sense, Kevin, is for the town board, which for whatever historical reasons, none of us were involved, I don't think in this, on either side of the table, is that the town said they would take it over either because the village didn't want to do it or because, for whatever reason, we are in a situation where the town runs the Moriella Pool. By contract, we are supposed to go handsies on capital expenditures for the pool. But we have no say in the operational expenditures of Moriella Pool. That is solely within the town board's purview. And all I'm saying is that village taxpayers pay their portion.
Twenty-seven percent.
Twenty percent, the, the.
It's actually down to twenty percent, but that's beside the point.
It's a, it's a proportion.
It's down to twenty percent.
And then the, the town outside the village pays eighty percent.
Right, and you all are supposed to run that on an income that you receive. Okay, so to say to, that because villagers living in the village pay less.
So should landlords then pass on that additional expense to their tenants?
No, the taxpayers pay.
I'm sorry, Sally and Kevin, I got, because.
They don't pay even.
Excuse me, Susan, because Susan and Kitty are, are waiting in the wings and we do have, we're running short of time, so I just.
I'd like to have Kitty answer. Kitty's been waiting to speak, so Kitty, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have, um, you know, had a traditional, um, paradox of the fact that, yes, the village tax base is either twenty percent, twenty-five, twenty-seven percent, but the population is fifty percent. Our populations are pretty even. So if we were to try to make this proportional in terms of population, I think that the fifty percent, fifty-fifty might make more sense for people. And I think what we're really coming down to is a kind of philosophical, uh, ethic here and, which I think everybody basically does agree with. Um, recreation is one of the few public services that we provide that, um, we all subsidize in some way through our taxes. And it provides an enormous public benefit. And public benefit really is one of the main things we're here for. So I think that, um, we will never operate recreation at a profit or even come close to breaking even on it. It is something like public education, like a library, that some people will never use, but everybody will contribute to. And that's one of the roles that government plays.
I don't disagree with that, Kitty.
Okay, so if, if we, if we look at the, the fact that our populations are roughly equal, what we're asking is, let's make this bill a shared bill. And I, I, I personally think the idea of having the committee make recommendations and then have to go to one board meeting and then have to go to another board meeting to get approval if a handrail is missing again, is cumbersome. But if that, if that's the solution, if that would make the village feel that you are being represented in the operations of the village, I would be willing to consider that for one year and see how it works.
But I just want to correct some things. It is, you may be a fifty-fifty population, but your own statistics show consistently that the village is one-third of the membership attending Moriella Pool.
It's membership only.
Now, excuse me. The whole point of taxation is to distribute evenly across the entire tax base the cost of doing something. So snow removal, you know, is apportioned, okay? Things are apportioned evenly proportioned by your assessment and your taxes. That is true of the library for fourteen. Nobody's paying more than anybody else. They're paying their fair share. I'm saying that the village is happy to contemplate the idea of paying our fair share, but it's not called fifty-fifty. It's called proportional to the tax base that we all pay on.
Or if it is, and we haven't gotten it, but Susan has been waiting patiently, then Kevin, uh, and then Jeff and Kevin, I think.
Well, I mean, just very quickly, and Sally, maybe we can come up with a solution. I mean, there's also a lot of people in the town outside the village who feel pretty strongly about closing Moriella Pool and say, "We have the county pool, so why are we even having a, you know, a, a, you know, a village pool?" I don't think anybody's prepared to make that decision just yet, and I don't want to bring it up, but I just know that is a lot of conversation. At least people outside of the village feel, you know, we can just go to the county pool and, you know, we have our own pools. And so, you know, there's a lot of people in the town outside the village who don't necessarily, you know, membership might be different, but I think the daily rate probably shows it's mostly village people. But regardless, I mean, if you want to do it from a, a perspective of because, you know, of you paying A fund taxes and the cost of the pool is in the A fund and it's the loss, you know, if you want to, similar to what we'll probably do with the rest of the squad, is take, you know, the sixty percent loss, take twenty percent off, which is your percentage you pay in A fund taxes, then that, I think, brings it down to probably forty thousand, split the loss twenty-twenty. That is a consideration we could put on the table. It's just, you know, we really, because we have to adopt our budget. Right now, my budget is predicated on, you know, us absorbing half the loss and you guys taking the other half of the loss. Again, in my conversations with individual board members, people all seem to somewhat support this concept and think as long as we did the two committee, you know, the, you know, the town, the village and the town subcommittees working together in operation. So I'd like to offer that as a possible solution, that we take the sixty, the sixty thousand, reduce it to twenty percent, you know, of your A fund, you know, taxable thing, and split the difference so we can move forward with the town budget.
I don't want to be adversarial, so please don't take this in an adversarial way. But it seems to me that this proposal should have come in writing in order for us to contemplate what it is that you were asking us to do, for Kitty to kindly provide and, you know, documentation is, and I thank you for that. Um, but I find it very strange that we're at the very end of your budget processing and we're hearing about the proposal right now and nothing is in writing. And I just find that very, very difficult. Not only in, from the standpoint of our own budget cycle, but I think that it really does deserve some, some consideration. And I, I really think that we should have had something in writing and to ask us, or basically or basically to sort of suggest that we don't, as Jason said earlier, the hyperbole I find not helpful. And I also find it not helpful to ask the Village of Newport's taxpayers who already paid their share and contributed to the loss, to be asked to pay fifty percent of the town function loss when we aren't fifty percent of your tax base.
Susan, do you, uh, you had a, a, I apologize, I got a text, text that channel twenty-three had gone down, so I was trying to get word that.
Yeah, no, there's, there's nothing to do, I spoke to my boss, he said.
It's just down.
But we can just, but we can.
We'll just rebroadcast it, that's all.
Yeah, I was about to say, it's taping though, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's recorded.
Yeah, okay.
No worries. But you said you had a solution, a way to, 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 what, what, what do we make, what do we do next?
Okay, I'll, I'll bring it, I'll say.
And it just came back anyway, so.
Oh, good, thank you.
I'll say it again, but I just wanted just to respond to Sally. In fairness, Sally, um, the meeting that got canceled, it was, you know, when we were supposed to have a town-village meeting a while ago, this was one of the issues that was, you know, was Morella Pool would have been on it if we had met. And secondly, just, you know, again, just in fairness, whatever, the second I brought this back to the board, because remember the board directed me to do something very different, which was to, the board directed me to put a budget together that put in half of the cost of Morella Pool and half of the expense, you know, the loss, and basically present a budget to the community that way that basically put it on your shoulders to say, do you want us, you know, yes, no? And if you said no, we need to open the pool for half the year and then close it, or we would just not open it. I chose not to go down that route and try to come up with something that Angie and I felt the fairest way to go is to take all the expense, ask the village to just split the loss with us, okay? And, you know, as a way to try and work together kind of thing. And right after I presented the budget, the next thing I did was call Jason to get over here to see Jason. I ended up, you know, seeing Jason, but he walked out, but I talked to Jason later.
Not on purpose.
Not on purpose, he had to go somewhere. I spoke to Stu and I spoke to Ariana, I spoke to Brian, I ultimately spoke to, you know, to Jason. I know, I tried to reach you, I sent you an email, that's when I sent you two, three emails, called you, and then I never heard back from you. Now whether you went away or something, and then me and you got busy with other things.
All right, let's not go back and talk about that. Brian, Brian, if anything.
Okay, so anyway, the suggestion, the suggestion I had made, which I'll, I'll state again, is taking the sixty thousand dollars loss, your taxable rate right now is about twenty percent of the value of the town, and I have the numbers because I had to look into it for the ambulance, okay? So taking the sixty percent loss, reduce it by twenty, you know, the twenty percent taxable value that you pay in the A fund, which would bring the loss down to, I think, about forty thousand if I'm doing the math right, and then splitting that between the, you know, the, um, between the two boards. That's my suggestion as a, as a compromise.
I, I understand the compromise, but I think the point Sally's making is this. They're already paying the twenty-seven percent in the loss. So she's saying that they don't wanna contribute an additional twenty-some percent to the loss. So if in fact they kicked in another fifteen.
Comes out, it comes.
If they kicked in another fifteen, then their share would be almost thirty thousand.
Well, not if we moved it to the B side of the.
No, we moved it to the B, that's right.
I'm sorry.
We can't move, we can't move the cost, we can't, we can't move the cost.
Kevin, Susan, I'm gonna have to stop you there because I know you weren't quite finished it, Susan, Brian's waiting. Kevin had more, I just wanted to point out that it is now seven-thirty, and we have the option to choose either the rescue squad or consolidation, because we don't have time to discuss both before eight o'clock. Um, so with that, just keep that in mind, or we can discuss both for fifteen minutes, I guess. But Brian, please, and then.
Awesome, great. Um, with all due respect to everyone involved, uh, we all agreed on a specific set of parameters involving getting things into our respective clerks before the meetings, whether storm or not, uh, Thursday I think would be the deadline or even Friday afternoon. So trustee Ruins is right, we should have all had this information in our packets. And if not, it could have went to the next meeting, I'm not trying to jump on. I think the idea that Kitty brought up of having a committee, it may be a little cumbersome, but I think it's a great idea. I think it, um, we've seen some good work done between those two and trustee Glenn and Bosco. And I think that if there's, in my opinion, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, but if there's a, a shared management responsibility, then I think there would also be more likely to be a, a shared fiduciary responsibility. So that's, that's my point.
Susan, were you, I'm sorry, I think you kept getting cut off, were you finished?
Uh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, and Kevin, were you, I'm sorry.
I'm absolutely done.
Jason, I just wanted to say one thing, and Brian, I understand that there was a deadline and stuff. Jason and I actually met on Friday, and, and we were gonna put the agenda together, but then on Friday we were in, we were in rescue squad mode, in emergency mode. And it wasn't even until Monday, we even had a chance to discuss the town, the town and village meeting, and we agreed we had to cancel it. And then we were gonna move it till next week, but because of our budget, I said to Jason, I really need to meet with you guys ahead of time. So we made this special meeting, you know, because of the time constraints and the concerns. So this one particular time, I'm sorry you didn't get the things in time, but.
Number one, it wasn't one particular time, and the last time we blamed your clerk for not having materials and everyone was in an uproar. Secondly, if the meeting was on Monday, then the agenda should have been prepared long before that.
No, no, it was supposed to be done on Friday, Jason, it's always agreed that by Friday, Jason and I, because love last minute things.
Well, that, that usually means we meet on Wednesday too. So you wanna give everyone an opportune time to.
Brian, as long as we talk about this.
It's early, it's early.
I'm gonna move.
Sorry.
Wait, can I just make one other suggestion? There might be a simple way, um, because I, I like Sally's idea that we need something in writing, it's just much easier to think about these things. Would it be too much to ask to just have, um, uh, whoever's on the town board, whoever's brain cells says, just write us and revise Morella Pool contract? With all the, everything you wanna change about the relationship between the two, send it over to us, we have everything in one place. Your, every thought you have, so we can then discuss it and go line by line, rather than, you know, toss around the philosophy and, because I, when people, I have no way to know, I don't know half the things we've discussed.
And Stu, not to speak for Ariana, would you, could we, Kevin and I schedule time with you and Ariana, and the four of us could sit down and.
Ariana's out of the country.
Well, she'll, she'll be back. She'll be back very shortly.
I'm, I'm gonna ask that there be a financial representative from the town and our treasurer in on this meeting.
Well, we're just gonna hash out some ideas and big, we're looking at twenty thousand foot here, so we're not at, not six centimeters. So I mean, we will, Kevin and I will work with.
You three maybe are on some combination of those, we can all get together. This, we'll get a, a draft or something.
And then we'll get a draft of something.
That would be easier to follow your thinking, honestly, than the, than the.
Five of them.
Uh, when's that, when can do that?
The second Wednesday and November.
The eleventh, November eleventh, something like that.
We'll get the, we'll just back to twenty.
Fourteen, thank you.
We beat that to death.
Is that, is, is there anything else, or can we leave this in their hands for now?
Well, there, there's another question that I'm gonna throw out on this and then we're done with it. You always have a projected fund balance, I don't know what your projected fund balance is going to be for two thousand thirteen, but perhaps you might wanna consider earmarking some of it for this exact cost until this committee and we can all discuss this.
We'll make a decision after our meeting, we, we have a budget meeting after this, how the board chooses to move forward on this, will be decided by the board.
Yeah, great.
No, but what I'm saying is, you have come for a joint meeting, excuse me, you've come to a joint meeting and you have made certain demands, not requests, but demands of the village board that we pay a fifty percent loss. I am just suggesting that one of the ways to solve a budgetary problem in an interim position until such time as we can all work collegially together and come up with a proposal is to designate a certain amount of your fund balance to offset the, the loss, if there, if you think there's gonna be one. And that can always be remedied with another solution, should we find it.
We can wrap it up, but Sally, I just wanna say there was not a demand, it was put into the budget with the intent to come to the village to discuss what we had in the budget, and the reason I said to Jason that we had to schedule the meeting tonight and not wait was so we could have a conversation with you, so the board could make a decision of what we're doing with our budget. So we're not making any demands, we're trying to talk with you, and that's why we're here tonight.
I think putting it late.
I, I just had two things that come to mind. One is that what just happened in the, the last hour or more is just, in my mind, is the perfect example of why we should have co-termining this government and using all of this frame power to, to do one item. We have probably five or six intermunicipal contracts that are in the same state. Uh, number two, I, um, I'm fine with meeting with the subcommittee, and I'm sure Ariana is too, but do we have, uh, points, something from your point of view, what it is you're considering so that we're not starting from ground zero, so that we can start from there and then.
We'll do exactly what we did last night, Stu, I'll send you something. We'll get together, review it, we'll revise it, we'll talk about it again, and see what we come up with.
Great. All right. This sounds perfect, thank you. Now, is rescue squad basically the same conversation, just changed on the details?
It's pretty much the same conversation, so.
Can we skip the, skip the bulk bit and give you the, like the three sentences, here's the number, here's this, we argue for a minute, and then we do something else, we're like.
Yeah, but if you can give me thirty seconds, okay, what I'd like to do is.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, let me back up, because you know this better than I do. We have half, we have half an hour, I'm sorry, twenty-three minutes, your meeting starts in twenty-three minutes. What can we get done, are we tabling consolidation, is that viable, we discuss that this evening?
Susan, we may have.
Which is more viable.
We can start a meeting later. We can start our meeting at eight-thirty.
Well, I mean, Pete, the chief is coming and the C Wasp is coming, but we can. So anyway, I think I can do the ambulance real quick.
All right, fast as we can, then, sorry, let's try five minutes.
Because I think I calculated of the numbers, at least as a starting point, but I have to find them in the box. So let me at least start by, this is, um, the copy of the opinion about the ability to do this, um, um, and attached his contracts, a past contract. So if you could just pass this around, this is Joe Morella's letter to me, and it shows the calculation and stuff. If you could pass this around, I'll give you the numbers and I'll give you the calculations, and we can start off at that point with the sheet that I've already worked on.
Well, let me stop there because I'll tell you right now, this, I mean, I know for myself.
I gave that to you.
I know, what's that, I know, no, well, you gave, you gave me part of this, but the, um, like Brian said, um, for whatever reason, but a list of numbers may not be helpful if we don't have time to digest them. And frankly, it'd be irresponsible to take them at word, and I haven't seen these either, so I'm.
Well, no, that's, that's stuff that we won't have.
This is background we don't need, right this second.
This is, this is copies, yeah, this is copies you've all had that I've sent you a while ago. It's copies you all, well, I've sent these copies to everybody except for the covers.
Well, we all have it now, let's move on.
So, but I made copies to bring. So basically, just in real quick nutshell, we'll have to make a decision here, I think is what the numbers would be, um, based on the calls that we got, which is not what I have in the budget, it actually, the town would have to come up with another twelve thousand dollars. But, um, if you wanna just send these around, we don't have to make a decision tonight, let me just give it to you. Um, let me just keep running.
One copy of the pass calls.
I can't find, I don't know if Jean's here or not. That's, um, what this is, what I'm giving you, is that Sally?
That's just one of the pass around.
Unfortunately, I thought, we, we do have copies of everybody, but I have to find it in the box, and right now I'm not gonna waste my time. So just basically in a quick nutshell, and we don't have to make a decision. In a quick nutshell, Carol finally got today from the rescue squad, uh, what the calls were for last year, what the calls are as of today for this year. Um, I tried to use, did the same calculation that has been based in the past. The town calls, the village calls, the percentage, the taxable value of the town, of the village, subtracting it out, and then the reduction, whatever. So right now, based on everything, it shows, um, is it, can I give you the right number?
The town had put seven hundred and thirty-six calls in the village for fifty.
You know what, this doesn't have your, the dollar amount.
Well, we don't, again, we're not gonna understand the tables and numbers, give us the story, what's the, what's the gist?
The story is, I think the rescue, I think the village would come up with about twelve thousand dollars to pay, um, for their portion of the rescue squad, based on doing the taxable value and the number of calls for the moment. The town would have to come up with another twelve thou, I originally did a twenty-five percent to be paid for the village, seventy-five percent for the town. But when I got all the numbers and did the taxable value, did everything, it came out to the town having to come up with about another twenty-four thousand and this village coming up with twelve thousand. And so the town would be paying a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of the contract, and the village would be paying about fifteen grand.
Well, since we don't need to make a decision tonight, we can put this off till our next village board meeting?
And I can try to, and I can try to spell it out for you a little bit.
Well, I can have Nancy look at it and then.
I can meet with Nancy, go.
Obviously, we're gonna have the village, these kind of things we need to build, turn it and look at it, we need time.
Yeah, that's fine, that's not.
If we look at these, do we know what your specific proposal is, or this is just background?
It's, it's, it's basically what that is, is going back to a contract that was negotiated with myself and Tom Nyquist way back when, which came up with the original formula, and which is, you know, taking the taxable value and then you guys paying for the difference in the calls that you get over and above, whatever. So this is background information from the past. I think what happened, just really quickly, where I think things went wrong, was, um, mayor, uh, mayor Duncan saw the rescue squad in the A fund, and because you guys were giving part of the money to it, he thought it should all be in the B fund, so he stopped paying. The truth of the matter is, it has to be in the A fund by law, it's just that you pay a small percentage that offsets the cost to the village. And so the town pays about three-quarters of it in the A fund, you pay a small percentage for the calls over and above that you're not paying through your taxable rate. So all the background information is a past plan that was put in place, that we've lived with for a long time, until mayor Duncan moved, uh, cut it, cut it, and we're just trying to put it back.
Okay, I guess what, what I'm getting at is, will we have a significant amount time before our meeting on the fourteenth of November to have your specific proposal? So it won't be philosophical, but it'll be, this is what we're proposing.
Actually, what I did do is I took every, I got you all the background information, just so everybody could be on the same page. Then today, when Carol finally got the calls split up, Carol and I, well, well, while you guys were waiting here, we're trying to calculate based on the formula to come back to say what we thought the, the cost to you would be. But I'll go back and put it together in a formal letter to explain it all, but you really pretty much have everything. I'll give you the calls and all that kind of stuff, and I'll spell it out.
Just what is, what it is you're requesting so that we know specifically what we're.
Basically, you need to go back to.
Not, I don't mean now, but before our meeting, we'll have the specifics.
We need a draft contract.
Sure, sure, and that's, and that's, you have all, you have.
If that's what it, she's.
You pretty much have the passwords as background, so.
All right, let's, uh, let's close that off, um, is, I apologize for, again, but, um, let me, let's do this quickly. Uh, we have finished from May sixteenth and June twenty-sixth, I'll move to adopt both sets.
Second.
Uh, any discussion amendments on the favor?
I just got them, I'm gonna vote now.
Yeah.
Well, all right, well, that's all, do we, do you want, uh, should we not vote in the minutes?
I think you're gonna move the table or the.
Let's go, the table, the minutes.
All right, it's the third time in a row, can we, can we plan for our next meeting? Then everyone will have read them and we'll have the meeting minutes from this meeting in sufficient time so that we can actually approve them, which is what, what we should do?
I think that would be a great idea.
All right, um, well, consolidation, uh, assume we all got the memo from Ken Bond with the timeline proposal? No?
No, I don't.
What?
I got a copy of it recently, um. Well, then, uh, Susan, was it you, Sally, who was, who wanted to put the consolidation timeline and study on here then?
I wanted to put the consolidation on, but not Ken Bond.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm speaking in different facets, so please, Sally, what is it?
Because that's just totally a different topic. I think that what we are coming to, I think is basically with consolidation, the study committees, for the most part, have done their work. The finance committee took on the facilities study committee because the facilities study committee never met. And so we are working on that. And I think it's time now, um, the finance committee is doing very, very well. We're so far with the data that we have and have been able to work out the budget. Ross and I and the committee have come up with, right now, a one-point-two, four-million-dollar savings should the village and town merge in two thousand eleven. We did not use budgets, we used actual figures and merged. And we haven't finished everything because we don't have human resources yet.
We filed it today, right?
Yeah. And we just filed it today.
We got a copy.
Our report was filed today with both clubs.
Katie, Katie has a copy with, if you want.
I have, I have a copy for everyone.
I would like a copy, yes.
And I'd like to, I'd like to know we were the first subcommittee to file.
And so they were the first subcommittee to be finished, and you're just in file game.
We have, you know, the report.
But anyway.
Brian and I were on that committee. I read the.
All right, Kevin, Brian, very good job. But no, the committees are, and I know that the infrastructure committee report is coming out this week. So we have those committee reports, finance is doing very, very well. We're gonna take all the input that, that you did, but what I was gonna say is we are one-point-four million and not finished yet, and that is without the million-dollar grant. Because our goal was, when we started, we didn't know for sure whether we were gonna get that million-dollar grant in the whole thinking process, and it seems to me far more important to show our two communities what could have been done anyway. And so the, I like to think of the, the million dollars from the state as icing on the cake, which is nice icing. But we have met. The goal of the efficiency committee, whose recommendation was that should we, before we presented the referendum to the community, that it had to be a zero tax impact. It could be less, you could do better, but no tax increase for either town or village. And we more than achieved that. At a break-even status, I believe the projection was we had to get five hundred thousand dollars out. At a break-even status, I believe the projection was, we had to get five-hundred thousand dollars out between the two. Oh, I remember, money I remember. And we're now well over one-point-four with the finance committee work that is being done. So, I think we can honestly say to this community, and we have not been conservative, have we? We've been trying to be fair and to put in a balance.
We have been conservative.
We hope that you have been conservative.
Yes, we've been conservative. In a sense that, that we are not trying to nickel-and-dine. We're trying to look at this especially, and I, I want, since he's here, I wanna publicly thank Chris Martin Blue for working with Susan and myself on the DPW part. And you did a great job, and thank you. Um, so, we've, we've done really well. And Chris and Susan really have done yeoman's service in the DPW part of the budget, which I can tell you was all over the place. And Susan didn't know it, but she was in charge of spring cleanup. Because the spring cleanup was in the supervisor's line. So, it, you know, really, very, very complicated and very difficult to do. But what I want us to do tonight is set a date for our target. And I know you, we didn't wanna do this in the very beginning, but I think it's really now critical that we set a date that we will commit to holding the referendum. And if we want to enjoy million-dollar grant from the state, our referendum has to be before April first. Okay? I just want you, as we discuss this, because if you say, okay, we really don't feel comfortable doing it that way. In other words, having a goal and getting the paper in on time is the fact that we remember requires, that's fine. But just realize that the deadline, if we want to achieve that extra million dollars to offset tax, okay, and thirty percent in transactional costs, um, we need to have the referendum by. And I don't, how many days do we need to file something with the state?
Yeah, there's a, that's why-
We have a, there's a timeline if we-
It doesn't change enough time.
Okay.
Well, before we get into this, it is seven forty-nine, we have eleven minutes.
No, no, they won't tell you.
Oh, well, no, actually, Kitty said, and Susan objected, and it didn't go any further than that.
Well, no, 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 I said, we can continue the conversation for a little bit, and then let's go.
Let me finish getting the meeting on track. Um, the, um, 'cause this might be a long conversation, is what I'm saying. And, uh, 'cause I'm actually gonna be opposed to this tooth and nail.
It's fine. What else is new?
Well, you keep, you keep rushing things and shutting things down the people's throat, and I keep going.
Everybody has known this for a year, Jason. The only person, come January, we will have been doing this in slow motion, in part to help you hopefully get in on this with us.
No, 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 don't, don't toss that, I, I have nothing to do with that. You're right, please.
And what I'm saying to this group is, if we, as two boards who want to bring our community together as one community, wish to have the advantage of the million dollars, then we need to have that referendum before April first.
For this year, right?
Right.
'Cause it is, it is an annual thing, it's not a-
Well, if, if the legislature changes, it might work. You know, it's all, you know, it's, it's a million. We will enjoy the million dollars for as long as the state funds it, okay? And right now, they fund it, so we know it's there. So, the question is, how many days before April first do we need in order to file and do our timely stuff with the state of New York, so that we are in frame April first?
I'm just gonna, um, jump in for a second from the perspective of, um, Jason, it's just that if we wanna realize the money in two thousand and fourteen, we have to do the, I, I, I just, I'm just, that's all. But anyway, so-
I unders, I'm not-
You know, I have that, I have that.
You don't know.
Do you know what the date's on?
I am, I'm gonna give, I mean, we can do this.
Yeah, let's do the dates, please.
No, I'm gonna say this, Susan, you don't know what I'm gonna say, and no one does, the four people just cut me off. Um, it is not, everything you and Sally say is going to be completely logical and makes sense, but skips about six different steps before you get there. We have not even, I have not read the human resources committee. Um, I don't know how legitimate these reports are, I don't know how thorough, I don't know how accurate they are. I don't know what the sum total of this reports mean for our community. I don't know what the, what the total ballpark figures, and nobody around this table knows these things, and either, nobody. Um, the most, you and Susan know the most, 'cause you've been on this most central committee, but you don't know how HR's gonna impact those numbers yet, because you haven't seen the report. Now, if we're gonna say to the community that we are blindly going to set a, a, a date for a referendum for something we don't know if anyone wants yet, except for those who are working on it, I think that's a big mistake. I think that at least once in this process, and this, and I've been saying this from the day I got elected, and been ignored the day I got elected, it is critical, in my opinion, that we get some kind of public buy-in. Not asking people to bust their ass in a committee. I mean, the standard, basic, everyday public participation we demand for every planning process this community goes through. If we can't even hold ourselves to the same standard of public involvement that an applicant before our planning boards are held to, then we don't deserve to be sitting around this table. And we certainly don't deserve to be kept on people that we're gonna, uh, make their lives better if you just vote yes on a referendum for consolidation, because it's a nice idea to have one government. Because that's the only argument any of us have, until we have the data. The data that Fairwater was supposed to be provide, provide us and failed to, and the data these committees were established to, to, to pull together, and are still in the process of doing. So, in my mind, there's a gap in the middle, where we have to have the data collected, the numbers we were, we were, we deserved to have two years ago given to us, and then, there's an article in the paper, there's a thing on whatever, there's a public forum, questions and answers. Is this good or not? What does this mean for my life? And after that, after it's percolated, and the actual final data is, is kind of descended, and people actually can cast an informed vote, you know, then we set the referendum, and then there's the political campaign of the, of the lead-up, and hopefully, it's not like the middle school, and it's more like the Constitutional Convention. But we're not, I think we're not doing our job if we get the, the papers together and just run to the next step.
May I, may I have the podium?
Then, I, please, 'cause then, everything you guys are saying is exactly perfect. This, we're just missing one piece, is all it is.
No, we're missing a big piece. Excuse me, we're missing a big piece. You and I both know when the budget is due for the village, and how many days we must have it done. The town knows when their budget is due, and that's what you do, you work backwards. And Jason, we have tried, and I have tried very hard to hear what you're saying. The study committees have met, they're done, you're done, I don't have your report. So, and all of this has been televised for people to follow, to watch, to ask questions, to come to meetings, to do. Okay? Everything has a step-by-step process. Now, what I'm saying is, you and I know when the budget is due for the village. We know we have to work backwards and start it. And all I'm saying is, let's do it the right way this time. Set the date and make sure the goals are met.
So, November two thousand and fourteen, how's that?
That's not, that's only your opinion. And I don't even think you'd agree to that, you'd find another way.
Can I just make a comment to you, though, and, and just to kind of echo some of Jason's? Because I, I just think somehow, something's been lost in translation here. The grant that we applied for and then was fulfilled, and then the purpose of the subcommittees is not for consolidation, it's called government efficiency. You found one-point-five million dollars. Tell you what, without consolidating, give us half of that. 'Cause you should've been able to find all of that one-point-five.
It's all your town, town side, that's why I objected.
I'm not, I was speaking still, Sally. So, what I'm saying is, the study is not about consolidation, the study's supposed to be about government efficiency. If it's government efficiency and it's in the town, then we have a lot of work to do in the town, and I would like to find- So, Susan, I don't need you nodding your head, this is me speaking, okay? This is, this is what, this is what it's about, okay? So, you don't need to go, if it's in the town, and I didn't say it was, I said, if it's in the town, okay. You say most of it's in the town, a million of it's in the town, give me half of it. Show me where I can get a half-million dollars of savings, and not now, but show me tomorrow, where I can get a half-million dollars in savings. Because that would be real. I'm not saying your numbers aren't real, I'm not saying any of the numbers are real, but it seems to be, people have gone into, and I've watched a lot of them on TV, it seems to be everyone's end game here, and Jason can agree to disagree, is consolidation's the only way to do it. Well, no, the grant that we asked for, and the studies we asked for are efficiency. And efficiency doesn't always mean consolidation. It very well may mean consolidation. I have not, I just received a report today from the personnel committee. I watched a lot of it, a lot of it, to me, speaks to that we're gonna have some very hard work to do with rooms full of attorneys and unions. If part of your savings is based on that, then you can read them, I, I just, I'm just saying it is. So, if Susan has this information, labor should provide it to us tonight. Maybe we can take a half-million dollars off our town budget. Because I'm just asking for half of it, Susan. And if we can't, then I guess I'm very confused by the whole process. And anyone that's worked with me on the board, or seen me on this board, I need the numbers way ahead of time, too. So, for us to make this schedule and put something up for a vote, I don't know what we're voting on.
Jason, I, I haven't-
I haven't actually said what it's-
Frank, go.
Oh, I was gonna say that, um, to drag your feet and not hold your committee and say those kind of things.
Oh, I didn't drag my feet, I didn't hold my committee, you're absolutely right.
Right, well, I mean, okay, well, don't interrupt me. I'm sorry, I don't even wanna say that, 'cause I hate the way this is going right now. But I really think that even if the consolidation doesn't go through, which it may or may not, um, we still have done the research, and we'll still have the answers. And then if it doesn't go through, we can still find these things. But I think if we don't look at it and don't move forward one way or the other, then we'll never get there. And, and Jason, I mean, like, you know, I'm, I am concerned about, um, moving forward too quickly a little bit. But I think Sally makes a good point about setting a deadline, and maybe we don't have to set the deadline to have the actual referendum, but we could set the deadline, we could find out when we need to have that vote by. And then, and then, up until then, cram, and, you know, devote most of our attention, or as much as humanly possible, to getting there, and then have that vote, and then we can decide whether or not to go to the referendum.
Um, I, I do know that.
I think, I think that's fair, and, and I think it's just, it's a little strange when, you know, you say those things and you haven't done that.
And I, I don't mean to be critical, but, but I think all of us remember college days. And, you know, the professor has said, the paper is due. As such, you know, here's the syllabus, here's when the exam is, here's when midterm is, here's when the papers due. You know, then you have to set your, what, whatever way you wanna do it, you know the deadline. And that's all I'm asking us to do, is set a syllabus, set a timeline. I like Brian's idea, we'll work as hard as we can to get there. If we're not done, we won't kill each other over, I might kill some people, but we won't in general kill each other. And, you know, get the process done. Because I think, you know, and, and nobody's at fault, but I think, just this evening, as hard as we've tried to work together, it, it clearly suggests that we spend an awful lot of time getting not much done. And one government might be a better way for this community to go. And so, all I'm asking is, that we commit on behalf of the committee, because I'm proud of what the committees have done, I really, you know, they've done, they've worked hard with the committees, and, you know. So, I think we have made yeoman, I, I'm surprised. We did better than I thought we were going to do when we fought it out last year. And I'd just like us to give a tentative thought, that we start thinking about the end in sight and working backwards, as, as Brian said, which I thank you for saying that. If we don't get there, we'll just all say, we gave it our best try, and we'll have to wait a year. But I would hate to see us, if we can possibly gain that million dollars, we wouldn't be having the Moriella discussion we had earlier. I mean, they're, you know, this is, we, we're working hard to show that we can work together. So, I'm asking us, do you wanna try for March nineteenth, which is a Tuesday, March twenty-first, which is a Thursday? You know, to set a date that we'll aim for together. And not discounting anything that Jason said, and by the time we get there, Jason, you will be so proud of us that you will buy in.
It's not about that, Sally. I have to cut you off, 'cause we're already running out of time for me, please. I'm, I'm cutting her off to give it to you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, it sort of backs up what Brian and Sally are saying, but let me just try to put a little different perspective. I do think the million dollars has made a difference, and I think the fact of the April first deadline, so we could give the community the opportunity in, um, um, two thousand and fourteen to get the million dollars, I think is an obligation on our part to try our hardest to do. By setting the date now, it, we don't have to live by it, it's just, I mean, we're basically setting it now, then we work backwards with the timeline that basically says, what is all the work that needs to be done in terms of, like Jason's right, we have to get the community reports. We have to put together a, um, a recommendation of what this community, this government's gonna look like, based on all of the reports, come up with a model, start to sell it to the community, get the two boards to agree they like the model, agree the fact that we're comfortable with the numbers we brought forward, that the million for saving, get the boards to agree, get the boards to agree they wanna put it up, and then start to sell it to the community. We could at any given point decide not to end up going forward on March nineteenth, but we're putting, we're doing it like Sally said, we're giving ourselves a deadline, we're working towards it. If we're not ready to take the test, we don't have to do it, but we have to, I, I mean, I'm not willing to lose that million dollars.
When do we decide we're selling this to the community, when do we decide we're selling this?
No, 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 educate the community, educate the community through the-
It's a precise choice of words.
Josh, I'm sorry, then we have a, we have a committee on the, um, community, community, um, community relations, the outreach committee, the outreach committee to take the work that we've done and bring it forward to get the community to see if they're interested in doing it, okay?
That would be very nice for a change action.
I agree, but I don't think the outreach committee has gotten the information yet to go forward and do what they need to do. I believe that since we've gotten all the reports, hopefully, we'll have them by next week. The finance committee, which was the way it was set up to begin with, will take all that stuff, work on it, try to come back now with a, you know, bigger understanding of everything, then it's for all our, both boards to decide, do we like this, do we agree? And, and, and then, you know, how do we wanna move forward? But just by setting a date right now that says we are going to try our hardest to put things together, educate the community, see if people think this is the right way to go, and then potentially put it up for a vote, we're just giving ourselves a timeline to try to get that million dollars for the community. And we could always pull the treatment and say we're not doing it, but I think it's our obligation to try to deliver it to the community, and we have to work backwards.
Would it be possible to get like the, um, like, are the two types we've discussed tonight, like the rescue squad issue and the Moriella pool issue, again, um, there's no proposal. So, I, I, I mean, under no circumstances will I vote for anything about any date, because I wanna actually see a timeline. Who's gonna be doing the work, what work actually has to be done? What's a reasonable frame of time for them to do that? Rather than pick the date where we know we can try to maybe try to get, uh, money, and, and shoehorning the rest of the process, it's backwards, we need to figure, we don't even know what work needs to be done yet. Let alone how long it's gonna take us to do it. Look at how long it's taken us to do the committees, and we don't have all the work done.
Jason, you have to set deadlines, whenever you do anything, you have to set a deadline.
But not before you know how long it's, someone's gonna take you.
Because if you don't set a deadline, nothing ever gets done.
Out of respect for Jason, which I do respect him-
Let Kitty, Kitty was-
Just, I, I did get to look at the human resources report briefly today, and it seems to me, I'm not sure if I'm understanding this correctly, that this might be an opportunity for both of our municipalities to renegotiate our employee contracts and our union contracts, which, as a new government, is an opportunity I don't think we will have the same advantage of if we stay the same. Am I wrong?
No, it's, it's not like a clean slate, it's, they're just recommendations for future negotiations.
But you are right, Kitty, it is an opportunity with a consolidated government to renegotiate all your contracts, the ones that aren't finalized yet, can still be negotiated. So, you're right, it creates a new opportunity to change the paradigm, it does.
That, that it just seems to me is our greatest hope for, because in, on both sides of our municipalities, um, generally, the way that we can make cities in human resources is by losing people. Because it's very, it's difficult when you're working with a contract to say, give back. Most of the time, that's something that employees have a hard time being asked to do. But my understanding is that when we're merging employees, we may have an opportunity to start some of that from a different starting point. And I think that is honestly the, the biggest savings and efficiency that our merged governments could hope to see. Because separately, we're locked in to pretty much what we've gotten right now.
We could have hours of conversations in this conversation, Sally.
Well, but, but Jason, you said you'd like to have hours of conversation, but you never seem to have time to have ten minutes, so, but, this is-
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Well, let's have ten minutes of this.
We're five minutes late on a meeting, we have people waiting for you, and this was, I mean, we're, we're trying to wrap this up and talk about next steps, we don't, it's not appropriate conversation right now.
I'm going to move that we set March nineteenth, which is a Tuesday, as the deadline. Optimistic goal, that we will try and have all of our work done by both, all the committees, the umbrella committee, which is all of us, the proper hearings and everything else, and work backwards from that. Is there a second for me? March nineteenth.
I'll second for discussion, as long as, that's, that's the vote for the referendum, that's what you're saying.
That is our goal.
The vote to vote, whether we're going to.
Not, not set in stone, it is our goal, to be able to do that.
I guess, uh.
So that you're second, we just need to do this second, is this still second, um, any discussion?
Couple things, um, one, I'm, I'm fairly disappointed that when we started this process, we were gonna have these joint meetings every month, and we're gonna particularly stay on top of this topic, which hasn't happened very well, and I'm personally disappointed in that. And if we're really gonna move ahead, we spent a lot of time on this, not only this group, but the steering committee, members of the community, the consultant, all of that, we owe it to the community to go full speed, to get the work done, and see if this is a good idea or not. And we can't continue the way we've been doing so far and get anywhere, because some of the committees didn't meet, even though they were supposed to start in June. Um, this committee, which is gonna have a hard job, because you're gonna have to come up with a proposal, and if we had these minor things that are such a problem, wait till we get this proposal that we have to put together, it's gonna be a lot of time. Now, some of the things that Jason was mentioning, that's the responsibility of the outreach committee, we've met several times, uh, Justice Vasco and I in that committee have met, we have plans for getting started, now that we have our first report, we'll get started on disseminating that to the community in various methods, so hopefully everyone will have an opportunity to see this stuff. And if you have any other ideas about that, please tell us, because, you know, we're not close-minded about any of it. But I think, no matter what we think about it in particular, in our own opinion, we owe it to the people who elected us to spend the time and do this right, and get the work done. And so far, I thought we've done, in general, not a great job on that. Some specific groups have, but we, we need to do better, and that's expected of us, and I, and I hope we'll all resolve to do it. And not, if we're opposed to it, we'll, we'll just not do it, or if we're really gung-ho, try to cut corners, none of that. I mean, we have to give quality work, and I think we should get at it, and, uh, I guess that's what I have to say.
I, I would just like to reiterate the fact that our subcommittee spent a lot of time together, and we did crunch the numbers, we read outside articles, um, and, and there are great opportunities for savings. And so I'm happy to report once again that my subcommittee's work and Brian's subcommittee's work is done. Randall Leavert, Senator, and that committee, Don Kerr, Ross Pollak, and Amy Cohen, it's all done, it's submitted. I would suggest that you follow up with every other committee and see why they're not done, because they, they should be done, except for yours, because you start now.
Right, and finance can't be done until you're all done, but we're very well into it.
And Jason, just as a little tiny example, just a little tiny example, our committee has determined that this payment of lifetime health benefits for employees is something that we cannot sustain, we can't continue to pay that forever, because it's paid out of current operating funds. Either the town or the village set aside, set aside money for that going forward. And for the village, if you were employed, I think prior to two thousand and seven, and you worked for five years only, you get lifetime health benefits.
If you retire from the village, if, yeah, if your last job is.
Five, five years.
Anyway, um, for, for, I, I understand, so, so that's why I wanna, I just wanna know if you want us to move it for discussion purposes from the town, do you wanna, you wanna vote first or?
But we need to finish our, yeah.
That's why, I, yeah, cause Kevin started talking, we haven't even moved it for discussion purposes from the town.
Alright, so, Stuart, did you have anything else to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm opposed.
Okay, so would somebody like to move it on behalf of the town?
Same application, motion.
Same, that, same with the representative.
That Sally indicated on the.
Somebody like to second?
Second.
Okay, now for just a special purpose, I just wanna make one just quick statement, similar to what Kevin said, really quickly. I think that, uh, most of the committees that, that convened worked incredibly hard, I think everybody was incredibly dedicated. Um, I know the finance committee was meeting once a month for a while, and about two months ago started meeting every single solitary week. So, you know, the commitment was there from every committee that convened and met, and so I think everybody should be applauded, I think the only committee that really fell down was the umbrella committee, which was the two boards, okay, and the, the two boards were the umbrella committee, we were supposed to meet every month, and you're absolutely right, Stuart, it was our responsibility to come and keep this conversation going, and if we had more town-village meetings jointly, we would've been discussing this, you know, and giving updates and stuff, so anybody who fell apart, it was the two boards, not the committees, who have all worked incredibly diligently hard for the purposes of doing the work that they signed up for. And so, in terms of moving things forward, you know, and I think we have been, you know, basically following the model that was set, and again, it was, I think, only us that fell down, but with that said, that's my part of the discussion, if anybody wants to say anything, otherwise I'll just call the vote.
Ready the vote.
I.
I need the, um, I need the Martian explanation, cause I can't wait.
The, the motion is to set as a, as a referendum, the March nineteenth, so.
As a goal.
As a goal for, uh,
All the work to get done.
For all the work to be done and have a referendum vote at that time.
For the community to vote on.
It's not a firm, it's not setting the public hearing for March nineteenth, but the vote for March nineteenth, and setting the goal of March nineteenth is being the date we work towards, with us being able to at any point make any changes based on the work we do, but it's giving ourselves a goal, saying to the community by March nineteenth, we hope to be setting a vote for the, for whatever, and it's up to us now to do all the work to be able to comply with that date.
Okay, so you're not setting March nineteenth as the date for the referendum, you're setting March nineteenth as you call.
As a goal.
To try and to be, to be honest.
Right, right, right. Right.
No, no.
No, 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 to set the date for March nineteenth with the intent of doing all the work to feel comfortable bringing it up for a vote on that date, but we can change it at any given point, it's setting a deadline for ourselves and making everybody have to work to get to that goal.
It's not firm.
Okay, so.
So the goal is to have, the goal is to have the vote on March nineteenth.
Yes.
That is the goal.
So that is, that is the goal, okay, so that's what I was.
To pull it up for that set, right.
Wait, is it public vote, or, or the board vote?
Yes, no, the public vote.
The public referendum.
The public votes.
Does anyone know, but we need to pass, before you have a referendum, each board needs to pass.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that's to be done.
But you know, anyone?
March twenty, that's probably, legally too soon, to be honest.
We're setting our end goal.
It might not be legally possible.
Yeah, I don't know, does anyone know before we?
It is, it is legally possible, because, um.
Well, how many days before?
There is, um, without getting into depth, um, and I might even ask.
Forty-five or ninety days, sound right to me.
I think.
There's, there's a timeline, I'm gonna, I can pass this all off to you just for you to, there was sent the email, but again, I follow up with the paper, even though it was in a waste, but, in here is a, in here is a, um, timeline that, um, basically using October twenty-fifth as the, cause that's when Ken Bond thought we were having our joint town-village meeting, that was my fault, I thought it was that night. So he sort of put down all the dates of what we have to do to meet a March eighteenth deadline, and so we have legal amount of time to do it, it's just we have to start following it, and I can, you know, give you all.
But we've agreed that committee reports, final end committee reports, December thirtieth, okay? You, you are way ahead.
I, I thought it was November.
Jean, is that all you need to know?
No, no, the finance committee was, you guys.
Uh, folks, uh, the very last thing we need to do, can I have everyone's attention, Susan, Kelly, uh, Kelly, um, Kitty? Um, the very last thing this meeting has to do before you all can start and these folks can tell you what they have to say, is for Jean to know what's going on, so she can vote. So that's the only thing I'd like to see happening at the table right now, is just fill her in, please, so we can move on. Is there any other questions, Jean?
Alright.
She just said she had more questions.
Okay, okay, okay.
So it said according to Ken, it says November first, adopt final committee reports.
So if we added a couple more days to that, we would be adopting the final committee reports, which Sally's now saying, December thirtieth.
No, 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 see, she, Sally's, the committee reports, the committee reports are being, the committee reports are already being handed in, Kevin's handed it in. Don't, don't, that was just something Ken put, put together as a working model for us to work backwards, that has not been reviewed, that has not, there's some misunderstandings in here that he put in there, when he misunderstood, so don't, I'm just saying legally we have the time, it's just that if we wanna truly try to put it up for a vote by March nineteenth, for the potential to get the money, there's a lot of steps we have to take going backwards. And maybe we'll make them, maybe we won't, but unless we set it and start working, we won't know. So let's just vote on it, and then we'll see if we can do it, or we can't, and we might know by next month, we've blown it already, okay? So it's not worth talking about anymore, cause there's a lot of work we have to do to see if we can comply.
Are you gonna vote?
I'm ready.
Okay, so the motion is to aim for
Yes.
a consolidation referendum to be voted upon on March nineteenth, but you want to basically reserve the right to be flexible, that if it doesn't.
Yes.
That is not part of the motion, but that, that is intent.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That if things don't follow the erroneous timeline, that you are leaving yourself, it's okay that you change that March nineteenth deadline. But don't think that's gonna be a goal to change it, what goal is to do it.
I'm not saying that, I'm just, either, either I am voting
Thank you for any confusion.
For March nineteenth as the date for the referendum to be proposed for the public, or I am voting upon March nineteenth being the date that the referendum is being proposed to the public. But that may not come to fruition, and the date may change, and therefore, I have flexibility, so I have flexibility or I don't, and that's my question.
That's what you're asking. That's what you're voting on is number two, we're not setting the date, we're voting on number two, and the truth of the matter is, as much as we, some of us would truly like to see that date upheld, so we can potentially take part of that million dollars, if it's not feasible, because there's too much work that has to be done, then we're gonna blow it, and we'll see what happens.
That's what's gonna be the flex, okay, and I don't think, Jean, the community would be too excited if we screw up
Okay. Anyway.
losing a million dollars.
Anyway, anyway.
So, well, how does the million play into it?
Because if we, we, if we don't, if we don't approve the, um, referendum by, before April first, it's, it's a following year, right.
And viable.
It's a following year. Okay, so it would have to be the following year.
So that's, that's the incentive to try to move this forward, if we can't be, so be it, we tried, and if we said we're just not capable of doing it, we don't have enough information, and we don't feel comfortable, then we'll take the time and the work that we need to do to make us feel comfortable, and if it's another year for the million dollars, so be it. But there, but, but some of us believe it's worth the effort to try to see if we can get potentially a model that works, people to buy into it, and potentially get the million dollars, if it doesn't, so be it, but.
Or we may even, never even go to a referendum.
That's right, we might not.
Okay, I'm on board, I, I got it in there.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No, cause I have no idea what we're doing.
Okay, aye, motion's okay, Eric, doesn't matter, I'll split it too.
It will, excuse me, I moved to adjourn!
Excuse me, it does.
All in favor?
Excuse me, it doesn't matter.
The ambulance.
No. All in favor of voting for, if you don't wanna adjourn, vote no, please.
Not gonna do the ambulance?
No, no votes at all?
No, I have to run.
Thank you. Are you voting?
I voted aye.
Alright, thank you, but I mean, the student was yours.
No, we're not doing it.
Are, do we motion to adjourn in the joint meeting?
We have a.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we just did.
Well, we never.
But what about, we're.
Yeah, we're staying.
Well, do you think you can sit on the side of the table and face your loving fans and?
Wait, before the board dismisses?
Thank you.
Could, could I explain something to Jeff before we vote, because he's confused, okay?
If you guys just don't.
No, 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 Jeff, Jeff.
I voted, no, we're done.
Everyone voted, we voted.
No, he has about.
Sorry for, uh, holding you guys up, we ran a little late.
Not doing the ambulance tonight?
No, we, no, we decided, he was deciding.
I think I disadote proposal, this is the HR part.